Good evening and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am joint Crowley Chair. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty eight, Paragraphs eighteen to twenty five, in pursuant to the Chapter twenty of the Act of two thousand and twenty one, and an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on September eighteenth. At five thirty P M. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access provided on the notice of meeting available on the Towne Yarmouth website. I'll begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta. Will Rubenstein.
I am here.
Jim Saban. Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Joanne Crowley, here. Seeing that we have a quorum, I will now call the meeting to order, and I would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
First item on our agenda this evening is a discussion on an update on our local comprehensive plan. I'm pleased to welcome Jeff Bag from B S C Group, our consultant. He'll be joining us via Zoom this evening to help us prepare for the September twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four, open house community meeting. And he's going to review with us the logistics and the format for that meeting next week. Kathy, did you want to add anything else? And we'll go right to Jeff because I know he's on a timeframe. Welcome, Jeff.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Thanks for having me. Sorry I couldn't be in person. And yeah, I have to leave at six fifteen for one of my kids has an open house at the school tonight. So I'm trying to do both things, which is great. So we have provided the planning board members with a document, I believe it was in your packet, kind of a meeting overview. And depending on the extent that you want me to go through it, I can potentially share my screen. I checked that I didn't have the right to share the screen just yet. But I'm happy to share my screen or just walk through the document. But as Joanne said, the community meeting is going to be next Thursday at six o'clock at the Senior Center, which is at five twenty eight Forest Road. And the document that the planning board members have had kind of covers a few, a few basic elements. But, you know, in talking to Kathy and Karen, you know, we, we, we as a group are kind of resurrecting the project back up after an almost two-year kind of hiatus. So this first meeting is really to try to reaffirm the goals that were established as part of the two thousand and twenty one vision plan. And then we, through, through some very simple exercises at the meeting, we're going to try to get some information on, and to help us, to help us prioritize the goals and objectives. And then we will build in the opportunity for anyone who is participating or attends to, to help us identify any new, new goals or objectives that haven't previously been identified. So that's kind of like the overarching purpose of the meeting. We, we, we believe that doing this as an open house style is a good way to reintroduce the project to people and just make it an easy lift, something that, you know, residents or business owners can come sometime between six and eight, walk in, interact with the information and talk to presumably some planning board members. Obviously, some staff at B S C will be there. It'll be four of us. And then maybe there'll be, you know, members of your select board or other committees that so far that we've talked to. The, the general idea is within the Senior Center, the large ballroom, you know, there'll be a station when you first walk in to sign in. We will likely maybe see if we can do name tags. And then people will kind of enter the ballroom and kind of have these four different stations to go to. And those are outlined in that document that start with sort of an introduction. We want to have, you know, this is all going to be set up by a station. So there'll be tables with, with presentation boards on them, probably with at least one easel next to the table with another board. The introduction area is going to be a large printed out version of the vision plan. So there is a one-page kind of concise summary of that. We're going to have a board that provides some pretty straightforward information graphics about the town. So some basic demographic information. And then we're going to have one, one more board that will be what is an L C P? So something pretty simple for people who might be engaging with this stuff for the first time or not in a while, you know, the, the basic components, kind of summarize the vision plan, summarize how the Cape Cod Commission is, is involved, how we will cover existing conditions and key issues, and then obviously an action plan. So it'll be simple to read and it'll just be for some, for someone who has never really heard about the project. And we do think that this open house could, could receive that type of, you know, person. Then the three other stations are broken down by the broadest summary categories that the Cape Cod Commission has established. So natural systems, community systems, and built systems. And then within each of those topics, we are going to highlight, you know, the, the information that Yarmouth already has for the vision plan. So under natural systems will be climate resiliency and sustainability as a board, like a topical board. And then environment in general, which will include open space. And our plan is to have, have written out goals and objectives that we've gathered from existing plans and interviews and, and listening to some of the other committee members and just have an opportunity for someone to walk up, read it. We'll be giving out sticky notes, and if they think, you know, something's important to them, they, they would apply a sticky note to that. Sorry, that's a dot. And then there'll be sticky notes available for people who want to write any comments or questions. And obviously, anything that's not listed, people can put up there. And we, we don't plan for this meeting to have every single goal, objective, or action put on these boards for the first, for the first round. It's, it's a lot of stuff, and we want to try to pick ones that are critical for the, for people to start seeing, higher level type actions that if people see them and if they start to prioritize them, other things will fall under them. And we can work, we can work through that between this meeting and the next meeting in January. So community systems would be broken down into the categories from the vision plan. So education and learning, libraries, town services, senior age friendly services, and recreation and entertainment. So it's kind of a big bucket of community, community services. And then the last station will be built systems. And so we're trying to compile that to be housing, connectivity, and mobility. So things like the Route twenty eight corridor or pedestrian safety improvements, things like that, community character and design. So things like zoning or design standards or other, other similar things would be bulked in there. And then the economy. So it's a lot. Those are big kind of groupings of topics that we hope to have people walk up to, to these stations and engage with them. And our plan would be to have a B S C staff person there coupled with someone from the town, presumably a member of the planning board. Maybe that's something that can be discussed. And then lastly, based on some conversations with Kathy and Karen, we, we put together the last page, which is just a pretty simple facilitators guide. So members of the planning board who might be present and, and B S C staff people will be facilitators. So people, you know, will, will want to see friendly faces or faces that they might be familiar with. What we're highlighting is that residents will probably have specific questions about specific projects. And that's normal and good and expected. And the first sort of order of business is to try to get them to walk around and make sure that the project's not listed somewhere on one of these boards. If they think it's important, we want them to put a sticky dot there. We're going to try something with the crowdsourced map. We're going to try to at a minimum have like an iPad or a laptop available for people. And we'll have, we'll have a B S C staff person available for someone to log in and put a comment on the computer. And the idea with the crowdsourced map is something that's location-based or very specific about, you know, Parker's Landing or, you know, you know, any specific location like a park. If someone is, is really trying to get information from, from one of the facilitators about that project or about that location, we want to try to bring them over to that crowdsourced map so they can put their comments. We can help them put them into the computer, and it's going to populate the crowdsourced map for the place-based activities. Then the two, the two, the two last comments are really that residents will also likely identify actions that are not shown anywhere. And that's good. We want that. So we want people to feel empowered to say like, well, what about this project? And what about that location? And what about this? And that's an important process for people to be going through. And so we'll use sticky notes or the crowdsourced map to, to catalog that. Then lastly, for, for the group, the facilitators understand that the, we're going to have another community meeting in January, and it's going to be much more in-depth. And we envision it as people sitting down in small groups with a handout with a lot of information. And they're going to talk amongst a small group, and we're going to give them questions, obviously, and facilitate a discussion about important topics that we've started, you know, started in September, and we present more information in January. And then what we, what we've seen and it's common is people will talk as a small group, and then they'll report out to the larger room. And that offers this really good opportunity for everyone to hear these unique conversations. And so for that meeting, we're going to be, you know, in person. We'll have a hybrid option so people could log in online, and we would have a person online to facilitate a group. And then we'll, we'll record that meeting. So it's definitely a two-step process, one to reintroduce this time, and then a much more in-depth meeting in January. So I think with that, I'll stop. And I realize that now I didn't share my screen, which I don't know, I didn't check to see if I could have that privilege to do that. But hopefully, that's a good summary for the planning board members.
I had it up on our screen here.
Okay, great. Will and I couldn't see it, but maybe Will has it.
Yeah, we, we still can't see you guys at all, and I hope that that's something we could change before the meeting goes too much farther.
Hopefully Liam can work on that to show us. We're on the T V. We're being shown live, I think, on channel eight. Oh, there we are.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, friends. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, yeah.
I mean, I think I've concluded. I, I'm, I'm happy to entertain questions or see if the planning board members have any input questions and how best we can help.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith.
So I think this is great. I think that what B C S Group is doing, I think this is going to be a great event. I guess the one question I do have, which really isn't tied to what you've talked about, Jeff, but more is how are we getting the word out to the residents of Yarmouth that let them know about this open house? I know I received an email about it, but I didn't know if there was any other marketing to it.
Oh, yeah, we did. We had a press release. I've been distributing the flyers. I distributed them at the Police Day Out, been doing it on social media. I've been sending, I'll send out another civic send, have a bulletin on the, on the the Channel Eight, as well as we had done a lot of publicity earlier on, just kind of letting people know about it. So I would like to think that we're going to get a decent crowd.
I'd like to think that too. And Madam Chair, one follow-up is Kathy, who from town staff has been invited to participate next Thursday night?
It's going to be myself and Karen Green, the Director of Community.
I mean, is anybody from like building or I T or the libraries or any, I mean, has there been any other town staff saying that they're going to be there that night?
No. Is that something that, we hadn't talked about that, actually. This is more of a kind of, I guess, collecting information, but it would be nice maybe if they had answers to that.
But that's kind of where I was going with it, that, you know, if we're going to have this stuff to talk about, there's certainly, you know, from a high-level stuff, from a planning standpoint, we can touch on it. But certainly from a more in-depth standpoint, I think if there was an opportunity for some of the other town departments to potentially be at this meeting, certainly would help go a long way.
Based on what we've heard so far, housing is coming up often. So I don't know if we can, I don't know if Mary's right for this as far as what kind of questions we don't know. But people want to talk about housing a lot, it seems, based on the questions or the interviews we've had with other department heads. So I would imagine that the public's going to have the same. I don't know.
I would just say one thing, Kathy, if it's okay. I mean, if, if, if not a lot of other town staff are available or end up being able to attend, I think that I would say all is not lost. I think we can work towards coming up with a, I think we can build them into the more robust meeting in January, for sure. If we feel like there were a lot of questions that were remaining unanswered at this first meeting. I just want to make sure that it, it's not, all is not lost if those staff members are not able to attend this first meeting.
Sure.
But we would probably want to work a little harder for that January meeting to make it a little bit more. And maybe we could come up with a way to have a staff, you know, staff people at the, at that meeting for, for more sort of facilitated discussion. So there's a, there's a couple of different ways to handle that.
Will, any questions?
No, thanks, Madam Chair. I, it feels like all the pieces are in place. Now we just need the audience and the participation.
Right. I, I do have, I do have a couple of questions and, and comments, Jeff. And I'd like to start with the crowdsourced map. You mentioned in the facilitators guide, and I'm, and I don't know whether this is for the September meeting or the January meeting. How, how much are we going to show via a presentation what the crowdsourced map is, what it looks like, and how it works? Because I'll be honest with you, I went on and began my review of, you know, putting some, some locations and places and things I'd like to see, not as a planning board chair, but as a, as a towns person. And I'm not the savviest at this stuff, but it was not easy for me. It was, it was, it was not easy. And I just wanted to go through how much you're going to, you, you, you are going to include part of that as the presentation. I'll give you a perfect example. I think what threw me off when I went on first was the very first thing is for you to look at what others have commented on. That's the first thing that comes up. And then after that, they want to know what you think, unless I'm looking at an outdated version. And so they, they want you to make a comment, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down on what's already been said, I thought. And then there's an opportunity for you to join in and, and participate. I, I don't want to really go through what it, in any kind of detail. But I'm wondering, what part of the presentation next week are we going to show what the crowdsourced map looks like? And just a quick run-through on how best to access it and, and how to use it.
Great. Yeah, I think that's a great question. Technically, we're not really going to be doing a presentation because it's going to be an open house style. People can arrive anytime between six and eight. However, the idea that we had, which is a, it's a, it's logistic, even though we're talking about logistics, we haven't figured out all the logistics. One idea is that people are going to walk in, and if they want to see introductory materials, they're going to kind of get pointed over here. And some of this stuff's pretty easy. So it's, it's a copy of the vision plan. It's what is, what is an L C P? And then we're going to have a printed out, a, a twenty-four by thirty-six picture of the crowdsourced map. And then we're going to have a laptop. So if someone's map-oriented and wants to ask about it, we're going to, we're going to facilitate them showing them how to do it. And it's going to be cumbersome. And the, the fun thing about an open house is that there's a lot of people. It feels a little hectic, but that's, that's a great feeling to have in one of these meetings, that there's, there's some kind of energy. There's people in the room. There's going to be that station for, for as long as people want to stay there and interact with the map, we will interact with them and we'll show them how to use it. You know, if we, if we have twenty people who want to sit down and, and get on the laptop real quick and put in a comment on how it works, that would be fantastic, and that would be a great turnout for us. My, I guess my take is that not everyone's a map person. So people who like maps will like gravitate to that, and they might ask some questions and then like, you know, how does this work? Give me more information. Other people are going to skip the maps just entirely. They're going to go around to the written words and, you know, kind of talk about like looking at the goals and objectives and, and put some sticky notes or sticky dots on there. And then we could always, you know, we as facilitators want to be on the lookout for someone who has a, a, a place-based issue or question. And we want to kind of like grab them and say, come over here, and we'll show you how the map works. So that's how we're going to handle it. And then the one thing that we're trying to work out is Kathy was saying that there's a, there's a projector screen somewhere in the ballroom. And if we're lucky and things go well, what we might do is set up the laptop and have a projector showing, showing the crowdsourced map on a projector. And someone who is working on the laptop will type in, you know, their comment or question, and, you know, it updates every five minutes. So they'll be able to see the number of, you know, public comments on the map change, kind of like almost in real time. So that's how we're planning on trying to approach it for the September meeting. And sometimes these are trial and error type things. So if, if it is a real struggle for many people, then we'll probably have to reboot it and try again in January in a different way. But we, we plan to keep the crowdsourced map open for quite a while.
I, I'm very, I'm very happy to hear that, Jeff. That was my, I was wondering, is there a laptop going to be there? Are we going to be, is someone going to be able to see how to get through it? Because I went through and I printed out the instructions. Because I had, again, I'm not that savvy. I have to have the instructions here, and then I'm on my laptop over here for me to do it. So I'm wondering if there's any way, as a handout, we might be able to print the instructions that people could walk away with. It would make it, I think, it would facilitate their accessing the site and, and walking, and walking through it. I, I, the, the only other comment I had about the crowdsourced map was the, again, and you've already organized it, so I don't, I don't want to tamper with it too much. But the steps eight and nine, one is the first step where you identify whether it's an area of concern, an area to preserve, and the area to improve. That's step eight. That occurs before you select a topic area. And I was wondering why the topic area wouldn't have come first? And in addition, the topic areas are a little bit different than our goals and objectives. They look more like Cape Cod Commission topic areas. Do I have that right? Like we, or are the, are the topic areas the same as our?
I think it's more like the vision plan.
Yeah, but I don't, it seemed to be. But then land use and development is not in our vision statement.
What's that?
Land use and development, is that a goal? Please help me remember.
Like community character and design.
Something like that. Yeah, okay. I'm just suggesting that those, those topic areas are not uniquely the same as the goals and objectives, which you've neatly aligned with the Cape Cod Commission goals. And I really appreciate that. You've taken our eleven goals and lined them up exactly into the place types that the Commission wants us to make sure we cover. But as I, as I jump to the, to the crowdsourced map, they're just a little bit different. And I'm hoping we'll be able to crosswalk between the two. The paper that we get from people that might not be a crowdsourced map, and then the, the actual crowdsourced map. And that was kind of where I was going with my second question. The, the, the comments that we get at the meeting, are we going to enter those into the crowdsourced map?
I think he was. If, if it's, if it's a mappable one.
Right.
If, if you get a comment on a sticky, Jeff, at this meeting, are you going to be inserting it as a comment? A written comment within the, within the hub?
Yep, we, so it's, if it's map-based, so if someone's at the station that talks about community systems and they stick a sticky note and it's a place-based recommendation or some other thought, we will probably take that and put it into the crowdsourced. We can do that manually, if that was your question. And then if someone, if we have a ton of people and not everyone could get to that station and, and people are talking and, and people want to put a sticky note down and say that I, I think this, this, this intersection needs a crosswalk, we'll, we'll take a sticky note and we can, we can load it into the crowdsourced map after. That's definitely not a problem. The goal, the goal, the primary goal would be for people to see it. I'm with Joanne, like I, I love maps, but I don't like the online interacting with maps. I think I can agree that it's a little challenging. So it's tough because it's not for everybody.
Yep.
But we will be there to try to help the best we can to get people either. If they're really interested in trying to get in the map, we'll, we'll help them get there. And any kind of comments, you know, what we want to try to do is the sticky notes, sorry, I keep saying that, the sticky dots next to a goal or objective, if people are placing dots next to it, that helps us know that it's important to them. A sticky note can have a note of any type on it, whether they like it or they hate it, or they, we miss something and they think that this is more important. We, we will catalog all of that and, and make sure it's incorporated. And if it's map-based, we'll load it in the crowdsourced map after the meeting.
The, the, the other question I had was regard, you mentioned that, yeah, we're going to be there from six to eight. And there isn't actually a starting time at six. People can come anytime. That's, so the idea is that it's a very dynamic, station one is going to be open the whole night. Station four will be open the whole night.
Yes.
Okay, so it isn't, we're going to, it isn't set up so that we're going to walk people through station one, station two, station? That's not how it's going to proceed?
Correct. We, we had talked about how, we're not sure what the turnout is going to be. And getting people to sit down and listen to a thirty-minute presentation and then engage was going to be not the best reintroduction. So it'll be, people can, you know, the, all of us will be there for that two-hour block. And hopefully, there's just a lot of people that we can talk to and, and kind of get them up to speed.
Great. In terms of printed material, will the vision plan be available for everybody? Will the selectmen's goals be available? I think they should be.
Sure.
And again, if there's some way we can, I mean, I couldn't print the instructions very well, but I think if there are way to do the instructions, that would be helpful.
I didn't actually look at the instructions, but I can see if they're, sometimes it's easier if you kind of do, take some pictures and make it a little bit more user-friendly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Kathy, we're, we can look at the instructions as well and make sure that if it needs to be massaged for a printed version, we'll help you with the instructions. I apologize because, Joanne, I didn't finish the, I didn't answer your other question. I, we will look at the crowdsourced map and see if we can potentially change the order of those questions and whatever we can do without, you know, like changing the data that's already been collected. We'll, we'll, we'll look at that.
Oh, that, that's, that was really my second comment, Jeff. I don't want to disrupt it. I was just curious as to why the, the three categories of concern, preserve were first before you picked a topic. But either way, we're going to get the information. And again, you guys are the experts on this, not me. So I'm sure there's some logic behind why it's organized that way. So don't change it on my behalf. If it seems to work, I'm okay with it. I just, it just seemed to be, it seemed to be different for me, that's all. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. And I think that's, that's, that's all I had.
I just had a couple of comments. Since station one is kind of the introduction, does everyone kind of need to hit station one before they move to the other station? So should we have like two station ones and then it goes into the rest of the? Because it doesn't matter what order you do stations two, three, and four in, but does it matter if you kind of get that introduction to station one?
I think that's a good question. I don't know that we can create two of the, I don't know that we can create two stations. But one thing that we did talk about was making sure that when you walk into the room, station one isn't just the, it isn't just the first thing you see, because we were worried that everyone would just kind of, if people arrive at six in groups, they would get in a long line, and we kind of wanted to spread out, spread the room out. I think as long as people get around, I think that would be the best case scenario. But let, let's, let me think about that a little bit as well, just the, the room, the floor. Just the, the room, the flow of the room. I don't think that they have to hit the introduction, uh, introduction station first necessarily, but some people, you know, it's gonna be people that you may or may not recognize, but if, if people come in and say, I've, I've never heard about this project, like, we probably wanna get them to the introduction station, and if they say, uh, thank God this project's finally taking off, I've attended all the meetings, then we would like, you know, we wanna get them around to the other stations, just to spread people out.
And then I'm just wondering whether we should have something, like a next steps thing in the introduction tube, just to let people know about that January meeting, something that they can take away?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, Heather and I were talking about maybe just a one-page or, like a one-page handout that would have the QR code, you know, that's what we're trying to, we know that not everyone uses technology, so that's totally fine, but like those who do, the QR code is just the fastest way for most people to get information, so, we could have the crowdsourced map, we have the web page of information, and we could have, you know, something that says the next meeting to come in January. If we had the Ju- if we had the January meeting date in place, that might be really helpful, but I don't know if that's gonna be possible between now and next week.
Any, any other questions?
I'm good.
Mr. Rubenstein? Okay. Kathy, you're good? Thank you so.
Thank you, I have one question. Kathy sent us the, we saw the select board goals, um, which are great, and I think we're, we're falling in line with where they, are, I was curious if they've been invited, if, if they would've naturally been on one of those email strings, or whether they, have, if any kind of invitation to the select board members has been maybe sent out, or if not, maybe that's something that could happen before the meeting.
Definitely. Yeah, they were on the original discussions, but I wanna hit everybody again, like the one week before, so that people really know about it.
Sure.
Kathy, do you want that to be a, kind of a personal invitation from us?
Sure, I mean.
Board to board? I'm not trying to create more work for you. And, or not that that might make a difference, but.
I, I just think, like, lots of times I'd say, on behalf of the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I just said something, but I can certainly send them something directly. I typically try to do it through the town administrator's office, but I think in this one, I'll just send it directly to their.
Great, 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 okay. Anything else, Jeff?
I don't have anything else. We're excited to come next Thursday and be there for the afternoon, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate you joining us this evening. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
We'll see you next week.
Yep, thanks.
Madam Chair, would this be a good time just to talk about who can and can't be there, and are we okay with,
Oh, you're.
Being the, as a board, or is that later in the agenda?
Uh, no, Will, you're playing clerk, I like that.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that's good.
Is this a hint about what might be coming later in the agenda? Anyway.
He wants to know who's gonna be there for the twenty-sixth.
Well, it's only because I, I, I am, I'm tentatively, I, I can't, I can't declare that I will be there, but, it is on my calendar and I intend to be there, and I know that's kinda lame, but that's just where I am right now.
No, I think that's a fair enough question. I, I certainly will be there. Gentlemen?
I'm intending to be there.
I, I'm not sure.
Uh, I think Susan is intending to be there, and I think Jim is back. Jim was back, so it looks like we, we will have a good representation there. Thanks, thanks for bringing that.
Do you wanna assign, do you wanna spread us out appropriately at the various tables or stations, or?
I think it would, I mean, if certain members feel more comfortable with certain areas, um, it might be good to kind of, put you where you feel most comfortable and, and able to answer the most questions or understand the, the comments that are being made.
Yeah, because, I mean, I feel like more of a community systems person.
Madam Chair, I wouldn't mind volun- the natural systems, I wouldn't mind volunteering for.
Okay, great.
You know, I will, can't speak for other members who aren't here, but clearly they could be a match, one or the two of them could be a match for the built systems as well. I mean, clearly, so is the member who is present.
Well, we have, we have Jim Saban who's been on housing for a while, perhaps we could.
Oh, sure.
Work with that.
Peter's no slouch himself, Madam Chair.
Uh, and I, I, I probably will be at the introduction. Uh, with Kathy. So, uh, and I'm not sure where Susan would like to be, but.
I think I would like to actually be at one of the tables, cause I really wanna hear what people are saying about certain things.
Oh, okay, good.
To, to do that, just because I, I really wanna hear what people have to say, and I think if people have specific questions about projects, I might be able to answer them.
Oh, good. So, do you have a preference, Kath?
I just feel like the built systems is probably a big.
Yeah.
Yep, great, okay. So I, and I, I will be more than glad to do introduction.
Great.
Thank you, Will. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Sure, you're welcome. Um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to be there, and certainly, you know, with another push next week, we know that people do put things on their calendars, but it's always helpful to have a reminder a lot closer. Um, so I'm appreciative of Kathy's work in that regard, and anything else we can do individually as well, of course.
I, I did have one question, Kathy. What, what role is, or how much are we trying to engage the new communications director in helping us with this outreach?
I had, I had a meeting with her the other day, and, and we kinda went over things. I went over all of the, um, all of the publicity. I've, I'm keeping a summary of all of the publicity that I'm doing, so I don't have to try and compi- compile it at the end of the night. And she, um, she helped Jujup the, uh, press release, um, that went out, which was really good. She did a great job on that. But she thought we really had a lot of things covered. Uh, I think some of the other things that I'm gonna be doing is like, um, I've worked on today a, a water bill insert that's gonna go on the water bills. It just kind of brings people, again, to that hub, so people know where, where to go for general information. Uh, and I'm also working on a script for the Code Red to go out to let people know, cause that hits a lot of people, um, that hopefully either Friday, uh, night or Ma- or Monday night on, on that. And then I think just hitting everybody else with a civic send, of a just, just a reminder, we're having the community, and then again, trying to hit some of the direct invitations to the different, uh, committee and board members, and just asking people to send out those things in the civic associations, the chamber. I can hit all of that all over again with a, a short little blurb, really emphasizing just the, just the meeting instead of the whole spiel that was being advertised earlier.
Great, great.
It's perfect.
Okay. Uh, any other, any other comments or concerns on this? Uh, okay, so, looks like we might all be there next week, maybe. That would be good. That would be good. Yep. Uh, the second item on our agenda this evening is officer elections and committee assignments. I think I'd like to do officer elections first. And we'll start with clerk. Any nominations for the clerk?
I'd like to nominate Will Rubenstein as clerk for the planning board.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
We need a roll call?
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Peter Slovac?
Aye.
Ken Smith?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. May I have a motion for vice chair?
I, uh, make a motion to nominate, uh, Jim Saban as vice chair.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
Ms. Crowley, aye. And a nomination for chair, may I have a nomination for chair?
Yes, I would like to nominate Joanne Crowley, uh, to be the chairman of the Yarmouth Planning Board.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
And, and me, yes.
Um, I do have one other thing I need you to vote on, um, because when we, when we sign documents for the subdivision control, regulations, Joanne just signs it, so we need to vote that, that, that chair and the vice chair or the clerk can vote for it. So if I read it, maybe someone can make the motion and we can, um, just that the, um, planning board acting under Massachusetts General Law Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one, he voted to authorize the chair, vice chair, and clerk or, and clerk individually to endorse on a plan the approval of the board, or to make any other certification under the subdivision control law.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Rubenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Slovac?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
So, because you guys, I was able to read your minds, I have the documents to sign, so before you guys leave, you're gonna need to sign these, and Will, I'm afraid you're gonna have to come in, um, to sign the documents that go to.
No worries. What's the deadline, please, Kathy?
Oh, you know.
Tonight, Will. You gotta get in here.
When do you think you can make it? It doesn't have to be tomorrow or anything.
So if I came to your, to the, to the planning department, you know, during business hours soon?
I'm gonna put it on the counter with your name on it.
Perfect. Then I could handle that, then. Okay. Um, are we also talking about committees, or is that already done?
That's next up.
Oh.
I'm, I'm gonna take them in order we have in our packets, a listing that Kathy has provide, provided for us as to where our current assignments are. And so I'd like to start with capital budget committee. I know, Ken, you have expressed an interest in, um, the, the, the timeframe of that is just difficult for you at this point.
Yeah, I, um, Madam Chair, I'm willing to do, cause it's, meetings have already started. We had our first meeting, which I know we'll go into that discussion later. Um, so what I'll say is this, I'm willing to stay on capital budget for this cycle, this, you know, this fiscal cycle. Um, but I would like to have it in the minutes that I'd like to change assignments for next year.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you, Mr. Smith.
This is, this is a, an, 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 a familiar refrain, because I felt the same way a couple of years ago. And maybe there's, it just, I think it feels right to have it rotate through the planning board, because of its unique, uh, calendar cycle, as well as its, you know, unique perspective looking literally across the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I couldn't agree more, um, and especially this cycle, I think, it's gonna lay into the lo- local comprehensive plan rather heavily. Um, it'll be a major part of it, so, I'm glad that you'll be able to continue, Ken.
Quite heavily on that this other night.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, community and economic development is currently, Peter Slovac?
I'm fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Community housing, Jim is not here, but Jim has indicated that, um, he will be unwilling, uh, unable to do that, uh, this year, so I wanna come back to that. Community preservation committee, I'm currently on it. Um, I don't know if anyone else is interested in it. Uh, this time of year is a busy time, not unlike CEDC with the tourism grants, Peter.
Right.
Um, the p- applications coming in. Um, but it's a relatively quiet committee during the rest of the year. But it does make some major decisions about funding, like for our beautiful, what's, does the park have a name?
It's the Parker's River Boardwalk Park.
That was a chosen name.
I couldn't resist watching Madam Chair as you said that.
Parker's River Boardwalk Park.
Boardwalk Park.
Yes, you should watch the YouTube video, Madam Chair. You should watch the YouTube of the select board conversation. It is fascinating.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if I call it fascinating.
Well, I meant, because this is the reaction that it's eliciting, and if you rewind and put it in context, it will be even more fascinating, I believe.
Uh, I am more than willing to continue on this committee, but I wanted to open it to anyone else. There are some interesting decisions we make on allocation of important resources. Uh, and, and some of us are gonna have to double up with only six members. So I just wanted to throw that out there, but I don't see any hands being raised, so.
What is there, what do they meet? What is their?
They meet on Wednesdays at three o'clock.
How often?
Uh, in the month of October and Nov- the, the, for a four-week period, they meet.
Every week.
Almost once a week.
Right.
Okay.
Reviewing proposals.
So, Ma- Madam Chair, I'd like to put it out there that if next year, I, you know, I know you said you'd stay on this year, maybe, you know, you plan out a year in advance, I, I would like to step on to CPC next year.
Oh, good, okay. Um, it's just, it's very intense, Peter, it's, it, not unlike tourism, you know, the grant, the proposals come in, they're evaluated. Everything has to be done by December, um, because it's gonna go to the Board of Selectmen for, uh, proposals. But the workload is a function of how many proposals we get.
Right.
And I think they would do the twelfth.
Would you do tomorrow at noon?
Oh, is it tomorrow? Friday, or Thursday?
Sorry, what day is it?
Today's Wednesday.
Today's Wednesday.
It's Friday. Um, so, I mean, it really is a function of the number of proposals we get.
Year to year, yep.
Um, you wanna, you wanna think about it?
I, I won't have time this year.
Yeah, it's, it is pretty, it's three o'clock on Wednesdays, so it kinda runs right into this.
Right.
The, yeah, okay, I'll continue.
Can I ask a follow-up question about the time, the timing of those particular committees, of that particular committee's meetings? Was that, is that up for discussion when, when the meeting, when the committee starts its process annually?
Um, they decide based on the availability, on my, this, this committee, we decide on the availability of when the members are available. It just so happens that they typically have fallen on the Wednesday of planning board.
I see. That, I would just, I was just more, yeah, it just fascinates me that,
The capital budget is usually Tuesdays.
I don't know. I, okay.
Yeah. Um, design review, Mr. Saban has already indicated his interest in that. We've, we've reviewed that with everybody. I think everybody's okay with that. I, I don't know if Susan wants to continue on, I, I mean, I would imagine that's winding down, Kathy?
It is winding down, but, um, there are still some things that we need to do. Um, we need to come up, I mean, we only have an interim use policy for the, for the parks, so we need, for events, so we need to, develop that and come up with fees, and then kinda figure out some of the logistics of how events would be run out.
Right. And I, I actually don't recall her, whether she mentioned about her interest in staying on. I think she would like to stay on, if I recall.
I don't remember.
I don't, we, I don't think she.
Yeah, I don't think we've spoken about it.
I know, it might've been a private conversation, but we should wait till she comes back, I guess. Land disposition, I don't, I don't know that they ever meet.
They haven't met really since Kyle left, cause he was the person staffing that particular committee. We have so many committees. Um, but I think, I think that's still an active committee, it just hasn't been meeting because there's been no one to staff it.
Um, and I, I don't know Mr. Saban's, uh, uh.
I don't either.
Preferences on that. Anyone, anyone else interested in that?
We don't know when they meet. I mean, is it a?
It's, it's a catch, it's a catch, can.
I don't think they have.
Yeah, it really.
It might've been once.
Just going back to Ms. Britta, I know she is, um, she was on the list of people who's applied for Matikes.
She did, yeah, I can update you on that.
Uh, uh, we'll, we'll get, uh, okay, sorry, Kath.
Put on the Matikes, if that.
She was not.
No. Okay, um.
Was it, uh, well, wait.
Neither was Mr., and neither was Mr. Saban.
And neither was Mr. Saban, yeah.
But, well, there's more to come, cause I would like to bring that up as well when we get to it.
I think we all would.
Um, so water resources, uh, Will?
Oh, hi, I really would like to continue. I mean, it's getting juicy, you know? Especially now that we at least have, even though it's not big enough, we do have a discharge permit for the, for the plant, and now the plant contract is about to get rewarded, so awarded, excuse me, as well as the other contracts, but we'll talk more about that later. I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to stay on.
Okay, any, any, anyone else? Are we okay with that?
Yeah, I guess.
Good with that, yeah. It's an important committee, right now.
Thank you for trusting me with it. At least for a year.
At least for, we'll trust you for the next year.
Right, one more year, and then we'll, then we'll see what the trust-o-meter is.
Okay.
So it seems like capital budget is Ken.
Yep.
CEDC is Peter. Community preservation stays Joanne, design review will stay with Jim, and RAC will stay with Will, and then we'll talk at the next meeting, maybe? With, with, when Jim and Susan are back with regard to the other ones?
Yeah.
I was just looking up online, so I was trying to figure out when community housing committee meets, and it looks like they meet on Mondays, like at three o'clock.
Right, once a month.
Once a month.
Right.
So I don't know.
Mondays at three?
Mondays at three.
Right.
They're a very busy committee, you know, and they do have a lot of things going on, and it is a, it would be really good to have a representative on.
Any, any interest here?
Right now, I'd have to pass, just cause I know capital budget takes up, you know, Nov- you know, October, November, into December, every week at least, once a week plus site visits. I just, I have a full-time job too, so.
You're gonna remember that, you and Peter, and, and Mr. Rubenstein. Peter, any?
Uh, no, I don't, yeah, I don't.
Madam Chair, can I just ask one question? You had touched on it. Right now, the planning board is a member of six. We lost, is there anybody in the Talent Bank that's interested, that we're aware of for coming on planning?
We had, uh, I actually participated in an interview, uh, with a s- select board member, Joyce Flynn, uh, for a candidate, uh, but it, um, it, it didn't seem to either of us that it was a good match. I, I have to share with you, uh, that the members of this committee, um, have set a very high bar as to who will be a member of the planning board. I mean, I look at you and Peter and Jim Saban and Susan and Will, and, I mean, I know I was a rookie when I came in, but I had a lot of government service. But some of the, some of the things that Joyce Flynn and I talked about in terms of questions, general questions for anyone, is, did you attend town meeting? You know, did you vote? And when I hear no on those questions, I, I, I have some, I have some concerns. Not that this candidate did that, but, there, there were some, there were some, there were some issues about, um, availability, so, uh, so both Joyce and I agreed.
Okay.
That we needed a slightly stronger.
So I guess, to be honest, we are still receiving candidate, potential candidates.
Uh, there are not, there are no active ones.
No active.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question related to Mr. Smith?
Certainly.
Um, thank you. How, is it written into the, is this, does this list come from the select board, or does, like, how, how, how did we get here? Can we just get a, can, may I have a quick answer on that? And, and then how does it, how could it potentially change? And who makes those changes?
I believe that these are included within the charges of these different committees, that you will have a representative from the planning board.
I, I can speak for, um, C E D C, that's how that, the charges of that committee was written, that there would be one member from planning. Actually, it doesn't say one, it'd say a minimum of one, so there could be more than one, um, on C E D C, but, you know, it's always been one.
Okay, so this, okay, so this ties into my frustration about Matikes even more. Okay, now I understand it better, but I guess, Madam Chair, um, if we're struggling to find a seventh member, as Mr. Smith brought up, it just means that that seat, a seat on one of these other committees would just be unfilled, but the seat would still remain unless the charge is changed.
It sounds to me, Madam Chair, that the drive-in site, eventually, that site utilization committee, that committee will eventually no longer be needed as the site gets developed, or at least maybe in a different capacity. So, right, exactly, so maybe there's an opportunity for somebody that, to take on a second role, if you're just on that part-time committee. I'm not trying to speak for anybody else, I'm just making the point that if you're meeting once every six months, maybe you could take on another charge. Certainly, our goal in putting this out to the public at large, as you're listening to us tonight, is we need another member on the planning board, and please fill out a Talent Bank form, and we'd love to interview you.
I mean, the list of candidates for Matikes was pretty extensive.
It was fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And only five were selected, right, out of the fourteen?
Five were selected with one alternate, who was a staff.
And then two were appointments.
And two were, right.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Smith, for that. Yeah, we, we need, uh, new planning board members, so, um, anyone who's out there who, especially if you were interested in Matikes, you'll have a lot more fun on this board. Okay, so I think we've got a, a partially completed list, Kath.
Yes, that's great.
So at some point, this has to go to the board for approv- the select board for approval, right, so at some point, we'll get on their calendar.
Yeah, but I'd like to do it all at once if possible, so hopefully the next.
Officers and.
I'm sorry?
Officers and committee assignment.
The officers, they don't vote on that, just the committee assignments. I just mean, like, let's figure out.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. Okay. Uh, may I have a motion, uh, next up is, uh, draft minutes. Uh, may I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September fourth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in faith, can we do, do we have to do a roll call on this?
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, 'cause he's there. That's right.
I know, I'm messing everything up. Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Slovek?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And thank you, Kathy, they were extensive.
Yeah.
Well, it helps me write the, um, decision, because I kinda copy and paste from.
Yeah, well, it, I mean, it was, it was a lot. Thank you, uh, for that. Um, we have next up, any committee updates? Sounds like you might have one, Mr. Smith and Peter.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so I just was gonna, um, just quickly talk about capital budget. We did have our first meeting of this fiscal year, this past Monday. Just so everybody knows, there was a motion that was accepted to change the chair, um, the motion to nominate Sandy Fife as chair. So Judy, uh, Tarver is stepping down from that committee eventually. She is not gonna step down immediately until we do find a replacement for her. Judy's done a great job, and I did wanna get that out there, and, um, and thank her for her efforts, but she does wanna step down. So we did get our assignments out there, get, to get started, um, with the interview process. That's gonna start in full force after next week's meeting. The week after, we're gonna be starting our, uh, capital budget reviews of all town departments. So, and the list is quite extensive, so, um, there is some capital budget, a couple of them for the special fall town meeting that have to be approved. Uh, I think there's only three, if memory serves me, but there's quite a list of, for next year's town meeting, that we have to tackle and go through, so. It's, you know, we're into the process.
Did you talk at all about the L C P?
Oh, yes, thank you, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, we spent a, the first part of the meeting, but the second part of the meeting, we spent an hour talking about L C P, working with, uh, uh, Mr. Scott, um, um, drafting and helping him draft some answers to the questions. A couple of the questions, we totally redrafted, um, so we actually are gonna have a second round review this week, uh, this coming Monday. And hopefully, if we're all in agreement, we will be getting that to Madam Chair, um, and to you, Kathy, and, um, it ended up, our draft and, our first draft and everything was typed up, was three pages, so it's quite extensive.
Great, thank you.
C E D C, we have a new chair, Courtney Butler, and vice chair Danielle Newcomb, so as we move forward into the, uh, process of going through our grants over the next couple of months, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Rubenstein?
Thank you. The RAC met on September ninth. We are still, we, we are still planning on having, uh, a more public-facing and not business, community-facing only, uh, public engagement session. It's just the timing of that, that hasn't been established. At this point, I'm guessing it's going to be late October slash sometime in November before the holidays, or between the raindrops of all the holidays. That is where we are on that. There was a really long update with a slideshow at last, at the, at the select board meeting this week, but, uh, the headline on all of that is certainly that the, the treatment plant bids came in under expected budget around ninety million, as opposed to a hundred million, which is great, considering it's only two hundred and nine million for the first phase in total. And everything is on track for, um, that building to start construction in early twenty twenty-five and be completed by the end of twenty twenty-seven, so it's gonna be two and a half years. And as everybody probably is aware, work has resumed on Route twenty-eight. The one thing to keep in mind is that the, our friends at the Mass D E P who control Route twenty-eight, um, have some rules in place about work in the winter, and their definition of winter, for all of our friends out there who are watching this now or forever, uh, is November fifteenth to April first. So thank you. Thank you, State of Massachusetts. The good news, though, is that there is an opportunity, Mr. Colby has said, to ask for a waiver or some relief if the winter weather doesn't appear on November fifteenth on the Cape, and maybe we'll get a chance for our contractors to work even through into January, but we shall see. That remains to be determined.
Madam Chair, can I just? Will, there is, there is an opportunity for, my understanding, for a waiver to be filed each month, depending on how the winter conditions are, so that they can keep the process going on twenty-eighth, so.
I'm glad to hear it, Ken, and I, I, it, it remains to be seen whether it will, they will come down from the mountain with the tablets. And, and say, and say that we can keep working. I mean, I don't know about any of you, but I can't remember the last significant snowstorm that happened, at least until January, at least, um, and for the last five years, maybe, and I, I know I'm spitballing here, but I really can't. So I'm very hopeful, because the more we can do, as you know, Ken, the more we can do this fall slash early winter, the better it's gonna be, even though there's other work to be done, and we're gonna have to revisit some of these, these contract areas for water lines, et cetera. Excuse me. And then, lastly, uh, contracts two and, sorry, contracts two and three are the ones that are being worked on now, but it's contracts five and six that are also about to get, um, further in the process, and that's a really good thing. I apologize for my coughing. So I guess what I'm saying is, things are, things are happening, and, uh, given where I was, Madam Chair, when I started on the committee a year ago, when there was some concern about whether the plant was gonna make it in terms of getting it out to bid in time, uh, for the October thirty-first deadline to maintain our financing, the good news is, eleven months later, um, things are in place and in some cases under budget. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Will, just a quick, just so the public knows, when are the meetings?
Yes, they are. The first Monday, most, most months, they are the first Monday at four P M. at the D P W building, and they usually go till about five o'clock, sometimes five fifteen. Um, they are also on Zoom live. I don't know if they're put on the town website in terms of the recordings.
I don't know.
I don't know how that works. But yeah, um, it, because Mondays also have holidays sometimes, um, it's not always the first Monday, so you definitely wanna double-check the, the calendar on the town website.
And I guess the last follow-up, Madam Chair, Kathy, could the code-red system be used to inform the citizens of Yarmouth, like the next series of road closures, or is there a better way that we could be utilizing to get the word out to the citizens of Yarmouth, because I, I've, can tell you, I've had numerous people come to me and, you know, complain about they didn't know, all of a sudden, there's a section of twenty-eight or Long Pond or wherever. I'm just saying, is there a better way that we could be getting the word out to the town folks that a section, because there's gonna be road closures as we move through this process?
I think the best thing that people can do is to sign up for the notifications, because I get a nice notification, it had a little map on what was completed and what was, you know, still needed to be done. Code-red is a little tricky, because I don't, it's, it's totally run by the police, and you kinda have to ask permission in order to do it, so I don't know when they would allow it or not. Because you'd have to update quite a bit, because sometimes they may think that today, this has been closed, and something happens, and they have to switch it really fast.
Right.
Kathy, my understanding is that it's also the Yarmouth Police Department that has taken on a lot of the responsibility, in, in total coordination, by the way, with D P W and through Lieutenant Mike Bryant.
Sure.
So, I, I would also encourage people to pay attention to the Yarmouth Police Department's social posts, which I know, again, is not possible for everybody, Ken, as you can imagine. But it is the place that you can refer people to if they can access it, um, and also, if anybody uses the app Waze, W A Z E, that is where the town is putting all of its up-to-dated road closure information, so if you are driving around and you're using Google Maps or Apple Maps, you're not gonna have the best information. The town has decided to use Waze, which again is spelled W A Z E.
Thank you, Will.
Any other committee, uh, comments? I, I'm, I'm not sure if this is committee, but it's regarding, um, the zoning board of appeals, Kathy. This is a, a question for you. You had sent out the approvals, denials from September twelfth. And I noticed there was a seven-hundred-square-foot accessory apartment that was, uh, you know, was a petitioned for, and the notes that, uh, Dolores Fallon, uh, shared with us, after a discussion with the property owner about owner occupancy and primary residence, because their declaration of homestead is in Winchester, the petition was allowed to be withdrawn without prejudice. So how does this tie in to the new state law?
Yeah, I think this was a case where, um, I think this was a longstanding violation of something that they were trying to legitimize. So I think Mark had been referring to, just wait, you know, and then you'll, you don't have to have, um, primary residency, but they wanted to try and go before the Z B A to see if they might be able to get it approved now. So they're gonna wait. They'll just have to wait until after February second, and then they can apply again, and they don't have to have primary residency. I don't know how big their house is, I'm assuming they'd still need to apply to fifty percent.
Okay. So February.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up question when you're done?
Uh, yep, so the, the, the date that the state law becomes effective is February tw- second of next year, yeah. I thought it was sooner. Um, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rubenstein?
Thank you. Um, when we had our lengthy discussions about this, um, ADA, uh, about the ADA changes that eventually got approved at town meeting, a lot of the concern had to do with, there's gonna be this tidal wave of applications, and, oh my God, what's gonna happen when all these people come out of the woodwork to try to get these things approved, and I was wondering if maybe in a future meeting, Madam Chair, we could get some real data from the zoning board of appeals staff about how many people have actually applied, how many were withdrawn, or, and how many were approved and how many were denied. I think it could just be helpful information on an ongoing basis, unless there's a place I can go look and calculate it myself, and not make anyone else do it.
I think Dee is doing that now. I can ask her for it. Um, I don't think.
But only, only if the chair thinks it's a good idea. Well, I, it, I understand that maybe it's, maybe it's not the best use of our time, if, if everything's gonna change in February, but I do think it's helpful information until things change in February. It was maybe the, it was, it certainly was something that neighbors were very, 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 very concerned about. And I just don't know if there has been this great outpouring of applications and approvals.
Well, if, if anything, I would think people would be waiting.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think there has been, because we've been, you know, been seeing what's on the Z B A, um, agendas. So there hasn't been a ton. There's been a few, don't get me wrong, but I don't.
There's been, I wanna say half a dozen, maybe?
Maybe. I don't think there's been a deluge of it, um, but I can certainly talk to Dee about it.
Well, I, I guess, I, I, I'll, I'll leave with this. I'm, I'm bringing this whole point up because there was a lot of fear. And we heard it. We sat in meeting after meeting, that, you know, if you guys do this, we're gonna have all these ADAs popping up everywhere, and I feel like it's helpful to understand, because we were looking at other towns as well, and I think the highest number we saw was Barnstable had twenty-four applications, I think, in one year. Rough numbers. So my apologies for, if I, this is a digression, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Oh, it's okay.
I think you may find that it, I'm sorry, I hadn't, my mic can hear me. Uh, I think you will find that with the change of not having to be primary residency, you may find, over time, people finding the Cape as being an attractive, um, investment, uh, to build an A D U and ha- and have two rental units, so.
Right, except that we're assuming that people actually even know about Governor Healy's bill, and, and if they do, they probably won't hear about it until February, when it actually goes into effect.
Right.
So I, I, I agree with you, Kathy, I'm just saying. I don't know. I don't know what I'm saying anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein. Kathy, you wanted to go through a couple of things with us?
Yeah.
On Matikes and.
You guys, I, I gave you all a copy, um, of the select board goals. We touched on it earlier. They were approved by the, um, board at their meeting last night with no, with no modifications. Obviously, the, it's hot and heavy, um, on their, on the co- local comprehensive plan, um, and then, eh, but, and it was kinda interesting, because they had the goal, and then they had the areas of focus, and I think I don't think it's particularly, anything out, in there is unusual, except for things like really trying to in- initiate, uh, more of a historic Yarmouth. You know, emphasizing our historic resources into having more historic tourism or heritage tourism being brought to the town. Uh, I think that was something that we'd heard when we were meeting, um, with C E D C.
I'm not sure who they think that's gonna appeal to, but, um, that's okay.
And then the other thing is, uh, is on the twenty twenty-four future agenda items, I'm assuming they mean twenty, twenty-four doesn't have many, many more meetings in it, so I'm assuming they mean for like, the next year. Assess possible town common in the area between Simpkins, MacArthur, and Town Hall areas, including possible relocation of a section of Wood Road to create potential library site. So I'm not su, that, that was unusual, I hadn't, I hadn't heard any rumors about that, per se. But you could certainly create kind of a civic hub here. You have the town offices, you have MacArthur School, you know, who knows what that will ultimately be as time goes by. And then you could have a library, and then have like a town green, so to speak. It says town common, it doesn't say like town center or anything. So I'm assuming that's what they mean, is like a town green. So that's some things to think about. They did also select the members of the Matice Utilization Committee. There's, those are a case where they had charter, does call for two appointees from the Finance Committee, and they elected John Anderson, and then a capital budget appointee of Lindsay Pietro. And then there was 14 candidates for, to be appointed for the five remaining places. There's a lot of discussion, and ultimately, they were looking for people who weren't already on some policymaking board. So they ended up with Ian Kelly, Andrew Laird, Barbara Lavoine, Joseph Potzka, Sharon, I was going to say Weimer. And then, as an alternate, they put Robie Whitehouse, who's a town employee. Never had a town employee on a committee before, you know, formally on the committee, a voting member on the committee. But that's what they decided at the meeting last night.
So no Planning Board members?
No Planning Board members. But there was a lot of discussion about, you know, these guys aren't working in a vacuum, they're going to be coming to the Planning Board, they want the Planning Board's input, and they're also going to want to go to the Recreation Commission, they're going to want to hear what they have to say, they're going to go to housing, they're going to go to everybody, I think, they're just kind of, they were looking for kind of a fresh, neutral group of people who would then reach out to all of these different entities around town.
I truly hope they mean what they're saying, they come in front of the Planning Board, because they'll get our input.
Yeah.
Five?
It's an exciting project.
Oh, I think it's a really exciting project.
Five, and five members is not, it's not a lot.
Peter, it's seven, Peter, it's seven total when you include the two appointees.
Right.
Right. Seven members and one alternate. And they, and they actually voted to modify the charge, to give you that alternate.
I'm sorry, repeat that again, Kathy?
They had to vote to modify the charge as well, to allow for an alternate.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, since we're on the topic. I, I wish we could go back in the time machine and have thought through when we first heard about the charge for this committee, and, and had a discussion about possibly asking you as the Chair, you know, to make a push for us to be the third committee that did have an appointee, in addition to CBC and Finance. I think it's stupid that they don't have a member of the Planning Board, even though it's an advisory board. I just think it's stupid, and I don't understand where the ball got dropped. But I certainly wish them well. And like Mr. Smith said, I look forward to them coming back to us, and I wish them Godspeed in this, in this work that should have started four years ago. Thank you.
I just wanted to kind of give people a brief update on Route 6A. We've made a lot of project, progress in the Village Center. We had a stakeholder meeting, and kind of, the consensus was, we're never going to reach consensus, but everyone, the consensus was, we wanted to move forward with something. And they kind of were saying, you as the town, kind of decide some of these things, and just move forward with something. We recently met with Mass DOT, got a lot of great input. Rich Bilskey is, you know, head of District 5 now, he's always wonderful, and always looking out for, for the town of Yarmouth. So I think we have a pretty good idea of a preferred concept design for the entire village that we're going to be presenting, not that different than what we presented at the workshop, but more, more details filled in, and present that to the Select Board, hopefully at the meeting on October 29th. Because we are also going to be looking for some money at this fall town meeting for, to continue with that project. We need some design money to, to move forward. There's some other options, options out there for potential funding for construction, maybe being placed on the, the tip, but being, since it's a small project, it might be an infill project. So all the tip money's basically been programmed out until probably like 20, 30 or something. But lots of times, these are much bigger projects, and some of them fall off because they didn't get all their right away, they didn't get something. So a smaller, you know, project like this might be able to be inserted as an infill project within the tip. And then I guess there's also some STIP money, some state money, kind of specifically being earmarked for Village Centers, that might be a possibility as well. So I think having Rich earmarked into, into Yarmouth is going to be very helpful with us navigating that. But, so we need to present kind of the plan to the Select Board, and also talk about that warrant article.
Great.
And, okay, and the Hazard Mitigation Plan, we are still working on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We had a meeting, what was it, was it last month?
Mm-hmm.
Last month, okay. So I'm just kind of getting back in, we did get a lot of good input from people on the survey and the mission statement, and I'm trying to coordinate with Martha Hevener from the Cape Cod Commission, who is working with us as a consultant, to kind of come up with the agenda for the next meeting. Hopefully, that will probably be in, in early October. And then I guess the last thing that kind of came out, I don't know how, know how people are interested, I sent it to you. The Cape Cod Gateway Airport Commission has out their final environmental impact report for their master plan improvement project. So it does have a PDF that you can download and, and take a look at that. There's a comment period, I think, through November 8th. So something to think about if you're interested in that. And that went to like Bob Rittenhour as well, I know that the Select Board have been very interested in, in all of this. And that's it.
Our seat on the, on the commission is advisory now.
On, on the airport?
Yeah. Don't we have an advisory seat?
I thought it was Christine Greeley, I don't know whether it's advisory, or whether she has.
I thought it was, why can't I think of his name?
On the Cape Cod Commission?
No, 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 on the airport.
Oh, I thought it was Chris, oh, oh, I know what you're talking, it's not Dr.
Yeah, it was Dr., it was.
I think it's Christine Greeley. Why do I want to say that?
Oh, okay.
I can check it.
But I, I do remember it was an MD who was on it for years.
Yes, it was Dr. Marasco.
Oh, Dr. Marasco, of course.
Yeah, I can check on that.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, right, is that next?
A lot of them. So obviously, we have the September 26th Open House Meeting, 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. We have our regular meeting on October 2nd, but that will also be the public hearing for our zoning amendments, they're not too strenuous. And then October 12th, we're going to have another table at the Seaside Festival, kind of being one of those kind of pop-up things at different community events. BSE's group is actually going to be there for that one. I actually had a good time going to the Police Day Out. There was a lot of people there, there was a lot of families there. People seemed really interested, which was really good. Yeah, they came over, they were asking me what I was doing, and, you know, and when I said, I know you might not be able.
You were right next to the Fire Department, right?
What's that?
Weren't you right next to the?
I was right next to DPW.
DPW, okay.
And they, they had a lot of things to give out, so it was great. I only had candy, I'm going to have to work on something for, for, for the Seaside Festival. October 16th is our regular meeting, and then October 29th, originally, I think we had the 22nd, but the Select Board are meeting on the 29th. So we will be going to the Select Board for our zoning articles. And I'll also be there for Route 6A Village Center, so. And then November 6th is hopefully, BSE Group will have had an opportunity to kind of digest a bunch of this information, and maybe come to you guys with some, kind of some thoughts as to kind of what they've coalesced from this information. I need to really start hitting a lot of these other interview, I mean, we've hit the main big, the big ones, but I have to talk to the schools, and then there's a bunch of other people we wanted to talk to with some direct, direct stakeholder input. So that's probably something that will be hit through October and probably into November. It's not going to, it's going to be something that's going to take a little bit longer. So that's it.
Remind me again, special town meeting?
Oh, the 19th.
Okay, anything else? Anybody? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Begging.
Mr. Rubenstein? Mr. Slovec?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Meeting is adjourned.